Public hearing for the budget. Ms. Fay, do you want to do anything you've got to say of this?
Thank goodness it's done.
Thank goodness it's done.
I just, I put just a summary. It's the numbers that you've seen before. Basically, it has the advertisement. The budget has been advertised. This, the public hearing today was advertised. And the budget portfolio will be approved at the December 21st Board of Commissioners meeting.
And your, and your main budget portfolio is on the table.
Well, there's a public copy right here.
There you go, the public copy. That will be on the table.
It's in finance.
In the finance department. If anybody wants to review it, they're more than welcome to.
Yes.
Just everybody remembers the day is December 7th. The vomital hall, everybody remember all those that was involved in that as we go forward. The world seems like it's still in turmoil. Any questions to that point right now in regard to the budget?
One of the items that if anybody asked you all about this, and I did highlight an increase on your summary sheet, this salaries and benefits line did increase 3.91%. But that is, that includes any salary increases and also the five and a half percent health insurance increase that we got.
All right. How much did that make the budget, I mean, the health insurance?
It was five, it's a five and a half percent increase. That was about $150,000. But that's included in this number that the 3.91% represents. So that's not, just to let you know, that's not entirely salaries, 3.9.
You got the general administration highlighted there too, or?
I do. That's highlighted because that number includes the contingency amount. And then on the next page, it does list the contingency amount. This year, it's 473,000. No, I believe. Okay.
So make our total contingency. Do you know, just to make it clear, the, the fund balance, hopefully, at the end of this year, it should be, total fund balance should be around 10 million. I'm hoping our cash balance will be around 5 million. It was a four balance sheet.
Is everybody going to say 500, 100, 200? Do I have to hear?
Really? I think the majority of people will, yes. Most people watch their budgets real closely.
Yeah, that's good. We appreciate you, y'all.
Thank you, thank you. We appreciate you all.
I had to make her feel better out there on the phone, no, I haven't. I'm not there now. She can hear me.
She ignored you.
Oh, she can't say much. So she'd have, she had, she worked with Albert too.
She's kind of torn.
I'm torn.
Yeah.
Well, at least they wanted one lot.
Absolutely. But Georgia wanted me in Florida, wasn't it?
Yeah. We're going to go ahead and get this work session started. The first thing on the agenda, now, the agenda is kind of an open discussion agenda, but the first one thing is the Big Canoe Water Authority Act. We had got an updated version this morning. It's six. Only changes that they had at six o'clock this morning was this revision includes a legal description of Big Canoe in Section 3, Paragraph 2. Big Canoe means that all tract of parts of land lying and being in the 4th District, Section, Section, Pickens County, Georgia, the 5th District, Section, Dawson County, Georgia, and in the 5th District, Section, Pickens County, Georgia, within a planned unit development community known as Big Canoe. That was the definition of that one. I can't remember what the other one originally said.
That's the only change, George.
That's the only change, yes.
And y'all have those names in regard to.
Very safe. The, and I read through it again yesterday, the one.
That's sick apparently.
I've got it right here, yeah. At best of our knowledge, all that remains to be added to the draft are the names of the initial members in Section 4, which we are working on and will send you well before the December 21st, December Board of Commissioners meeting. So, yeah, on Section 4. Yeah. Who is going to, may I ask, who's going to appoint those individuals to get this ball started?
We're going to rely on Hollis Layton, who's agreed to serve as Chair of the Authority, to, to help us identify those people. And the P O A will finally endorse those names.
All right. Ms. Denny, Mr. Barnes, have you all got any questions on this piece of legislation? The time is of the essence on this, Mr. Landham. Do we need to go ahead? I know we can't, we're not supposed to vote on anything today, but can they go ahead and get this resolution to the powers to be in Atlanta without our official approval?
When do you have, when you deadline, when you have to have it set down?
There's no particular deadline, but we do want to get it to the representatives as soon as possible, and their review, and then.
If we vote on it, then, I mean, y'all would just say, you know, you don't have any questions. It looks in good form. You could send it, so, to the names being added.
Yes, sir.
And then we can vote on it in the regular, in the regular meeting, and see if we can have it come out.
That, that would be mine. That's great. Nice. Ms. Fancher, have you got any other questions or comments you'd like to make on this before we go forward?
No, sir. Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the board addressing this, and hopefully you'll give us your favorable endorsement.
I always, have you met with, have you met with Dawson County Commissioners and see how they feel about this?
I have met with Chairman Billy Thurman and also Sharon Fawcett, who's the district commissioner who represents the Dawson County part of Big Canoe. They are both in favor of the draft legislation. I've also met with the attorney, the full-time attorney in Dawson County, Lynn Frye, and talked to him at length about the legislation. And they're on board. I will attend their work session at 4:00 on Thursday, the 14th of December, have a similar discussion to the one we're having here. And their voting session is also the 21st of December. Theirs is at 5:30 instead of 6:00. So, or yours is at 5:30.
Our 5:30 also?
Yours is at 5:30 and theirs is at 6:00. So Steve and I may be in separate voting sessions on the 21st to see if either the board has any questions.
Okay.
But my sense is that we are on track to get this to Rick Jasper's with your favorable endorsement and with Dawson County's favorable endorsement, pass it to Speaker Ralston, so that hopefully the legislation will be co-sponsored by Ralston and Jasper's in next year's legislative session.
And as soon as we can get it, they've always told us over the years, if we can get it within the first week or two of, when the session opens, it's a whole lot easier to get it on through the process.
Yeah, I was hopeful that we'd get it to them right after your voting session on the 21st.
And may I ask one other question? Who's going to monitor this? Because we've had, I've had experiences in the past where things have got changed arbitrarily down at the state capitol. Who's going to monitor that? Hopefully, that doesn't happen.
I think Rob Remar and myself, we will monitor it very carefully. And I have some experience doing that before.
Okay. All right. And you all got any other questions? I'm going to go out of principle here for a second. I know I asked for Phil to be the only speaker, but since we're, we're kind of way ahead of schedule, does anybody else with this water authority from Big Canoe, Bill, got any comments?
I'm here though, while I'm listening.
Okay. Gentlemen, I'm opening the door for a quick, wouldn't you all got any questions you need to ask us before we go forward with this? Sounds good. All right. David?
We're good.
Steve?
I'm fine.
All right. Ken?
You knew I've been in several times, Rob. This is something that I've always thought that should happen, so, you know, I'm very much for this.
Okay. Ms. Becky, Mr. Jerry, y'all got any other?
I'm good. I'm like, Ken, I feel like it needs to happen, and it's our posture.
Okay. Well, gentlemen, I don't know of any other discussion. I'm glad you all showed up for such a short meeting. I hate y'all had to, took longer to come off the mountain than did to sit here, but I don't have a problem with it. I will speak quite frank right up front. Mr. Barnes, you or Ms. Denny, have a, think we're going to have an issue with this as we go forward?
Yeah. I can't say. This is a work session.
Nanny, maybe. All right. Well, guys, gentlemen, thank you very much. By the way, y'all have a Merry Christmas. Appreciate y'all coming.
You too.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
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 All right. All right. We have had a, we have had a couple entities have asked about possibly taking over the running of the Pickens County Animal Shelter. One has sent us a, a proposal that, that we have reviewed, and I think, I think you two have looked at it. We're still waiting on the other one to send a proposal, but they have not at this particular time. But Mr. Landham has had time to read it, but we, none of us have had time to really kick this thing to see exactly all the details in it, if that's exactly what we want to do for the future of the animal shelter. There is some questions that need to be answered. We will probably need to get this group in and, and talk to them as we go forward, because we're all going to have some questions on this. My biggest concern was if, if we do go ahead in the future and turn this over to an independent entity to run the animal shelter, my main thought was if, if, heaven forbid, they decide to, after eight, eight months, decide to, you know, they've had enough and leave, then we're back to square one and having to rebuild the, the animal shelter again. We're going to have some sort of lockdown contract for that, as well as me and, me and Mr. Landham have talked to the fact that what exactly going to be the bottom line? Do we lock down the budget that they've got now and they can't spend no more than that for future? But more or less what they're asking, as you read this, is they want to take over the, the building itself, a lease type scenario. So that's something for us to talk about and look at for the near future.
I could speak with them.
Thank you. Close that door, please.
I could speak with Rodney Gibson from the other group, and he's had some recent conversations with them, and he said they would try to have a proposal by next week.
Okay. So discuss a little bit of regular, kind of meeting.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Are they, am I reading this correctly? They're not asking for the budget that we have now? They're asking for a fee per animal that they take in or adopt out?
What, what they're asking, what they're asking when you read the whole thing is, is they would like the, the budget that we've got now to be put in escrow or, or stand aside. They're not asking for that budget, but what they want to do is every time an animal, whether it's a cat or dog, comes into their facility, then they will turn around and build the county, Pickens County back for that with $100 or $150 per animal. My question was, there's got to be a cap that once they reach that budget, whatever that budget criteria is, if they go ahead and take in enough animals that they've used all their money by June, then what? Go ahead.
I think it's really about the addressing of how do you allocate the rest? And what they're trying to do is allocate the rest to Board of Commissioners, traditional, you have not accepted that allocation. And so the concern is at $150 an animal, if they run out of money, what do you do for the rest of the year?
Right.
And, and they, they've allocated that and made the December rest to you in this proposal. Normally, y'all don't, y'all, y'all don't accept that type of allocation.
Also, we'll be, we'll be in charge of picking up animals. We would still, we would still be responsible for the animal control officer that would work through the marshal's office. So we would still be responsible for that. And if he or she needed any help on top of that, so that, that position would still be through the marshal's officer of Pickens County, because the, this volunteer group would not have the authority to go out and seize the control, other than they could go out with the animal control officer to help seize the animal.
But I think to Jerry's point, if they have about $150, we've run up, we've run out, and they, we still have those responsibilities.
We still, yeah, that's correct. That is correct.
How many members are in this group that's proposing this?
I don't think it was ever stated how many, how many members. I think we've got a, we got a vet that actually wants to do it. And he, him and, him and another individual was the one that had put this tentative plan together. And they also said that this one here was very negotiable. This is not, this is not locked in concrete. So if we want to make any changes to this, they would be amenable to look at it as we go forward.
So they're volunteers? I mean, they're not asking for a.
Some of them are volunteers, some of them are actually on the, on this doctor's payroll. So what he would, what, what he would probably do would, he would move his operation to the Pickens County Animal Shelter, but he would keep his original office for quarantine area where it's at, but then use ours, or use the county's animal shelter for his base of operations and his doctors, you know, when people can bring in animals, whatever.
It just looks like we need a lot more detail.
Oh, that's why, that's why we're discussing this, not to be sure everybody.
That's not enough information, I want to.
Not, no.
And he does large animals, too.
He, he does, but.
But they just use a huddle in there and.
Correct.
Take them there.
And of course, you know, there'd be, there'd be, one thing you'd have to look at also is the city of Jasper, how he's going, how he would work with the city of Jasper and the city bringing animals over, because there'd be some expense to that part of two as we Yeah, you said something, another group, who, the other group is Rodney.
Rodney Gibson, his wife Lois, and Dan Ashby.
Dan Ashby and his wife are, are looking at the same type of, same type of deal, but I haven't seen anything officially sent to us from their group.
I had looked for them. He said something about the, but he didn't tell me he's, he's one of them.
Yeah, they, they verbally wanted to do it, but I told them I had to have something in writing to what we could work off of. Any questions on that as we go forward? Because we're going to have to, you know, we need to just pick through it and make our notes on the pages.
They, they, the more information that we got here, we're going to have to get a little deeper and see what's, just a little figure, get a little getaway, a little bit of it.
Yes, ma'am.
My suggestion would be, for cash flow purposes and, and if on that budget, they, they could not request more than 1/12 of the budget each month.
That's true. But what do we do about, to Jerry's point, what do we, what could we do if their budget includes the animal control officer? Is that a separate budget or is that?
I think that would need to be budgeted under the enforcement side, if, if that's what we were doing.
But, but, but right now, but, but right now, it's coming out of the animal shelter side, correct?
Yes.
So we would need to move those funds over into the marshal's side, and then that's going to, that's going to lower their overall budget line.
Right. They would just basically get the operating.
And then back to, back to Phil's point, once they reach that, that threshold, then what? I mean, what do we do at, at that point? Do they stop operations or, I mean, I just don't know.
I think they need to be in the agreement that they.
The more you get turned in to the county, the more you're going to have.
That's true.
If they could draw more than 1/12 of your budget each month.
Right.
I had one question that they had to park, fire department. I was there working, and this guy drove up. He says, I need to leave this dog with y'all. I says, well, what are you talking about? He says, I figured the fire department would take care of it. And I says, well, put it out here. He told me it'd run out in front of him, he tried to stop, and then the dog ran off, and he come right back out in front of him, so he just loaded him up and brought it to the fire department. From Carter's, well.
Yeah, we had a, we had a meeting with, with Puma up in Gimmer County. They wanted us to go ahead to accept animals coming from other counties. More or less, if somebody's coming from Forsyth, Georgia, and drives through Pickens County, picks up an animal in Cherokee, they want Pickens County to take it. And I said, no. I said, if it doesn't have a Pickens County tag on the vehicle, I said, we won't accept the animal. And I said, I can't, can't start, I can't start that. And I said, I said, y'all do that up here in Gimmer County? And they said, well, no. I mean, you know, I, you know, it just, you know, is what it is. I understand the, the theory behind it, but we just can't accept animals from all over the state or all over the southeast, as far as that goes. But anyway, there's still a lot of discussion that needs to be done on kind of, on that right there. Any, any further questions to that? All right. That brings us down to Ms. Connie Turcot has been working diligently on this fire protection. Give y'all a little quick background. We have had a company that keeps up with the sprinkler systems, the fire extinguishers, the hoods, the blowdown hoods and all that have to be certified at least once a year. Blowdown hoods have to be certified at least twice a year. The issue that we have come up with and have been coming up with for quite a few years is I have a pop load of phone numbers to call if I have an issue with any of it. So what me and Connie had tried to put together along with, with the fire chief or the fire marshal here, Curtis, is I just wanted, and they just wanted, and the sheriff's department just wanted one number to call. I don't care what the issue is. If it's sprinkler system, if it's fire extinguishers, if it's fire extinguisher vehicles, if it's hoods, we just want one number to call. So, that being said, we contacted three groups. One of them was Gallagher, one of them was Centos, and the other one was Cliffs Fire Extinguishers. Cliffs has come in with the lowest bid proposal, and Connie, I'm going to turn it over to you, because what we did, the function that we use for everybody to be on the same page is we had a layout of, of what we wanted done at each building, whether it was rec center or whatever. So everybody's bidding on the same, same page. So what, what Ms. Connie did was went ahead and made a copy of the Cliffs Fire Extingisher bid, but the other two proposals are the same, same layout, but the numbers are different. Ms. Connie, you want to give them the bottom line? I guess that's what's more important.
Yeah, Cliffs is, was the lowest one. I have, if you want it, I have a spreadsheet as to how much it would be for the admin building and for rec department, and some of them just is for the fire extinguishers, which is like $55 a year.
I was going to say, is there a big difference between the bids from the other two or what they.
Yes, thousands of dollars difference really.
And what flared this up, the sheriff's department has to have their blowdown hoods certified every two years for, for cooking over there, and it's got to be done. Curtis alluded to the fact that that's state requirements and has been, that they have to be inspected every two years. We've got one at the senior center and one at the sheriff's department. Is that correct? I believe that that is.
Yes.
So, so that's what really flared this thing up. And, and so we just started, because every, seemed like every year about this time, we have to start calling these people, these contractors to come out. And I'm, I'm, I just got, we just put a stop, we just want one number to call. We want them to put us on a computer that come, come November the 2nd, we want to see a flurry of activity with people doing fire extinguishers and blowdown hoods and sprinkler, what you call the P I V valves or the risers, where we're not having to deal with 15 different people. So Connie has, has done well. She's worked on it about two months, putting all this together and, and meeting with these. Curtis has met with them, as well as Sloan, and then I think the sheriff's department has met with them over there at, at their area. And Cliffs, Cliffs does the one, I think, for the school system, doesn't he, Curtis? So it's not like they're not familiar with the area, that didn't make any difference. Bottom line is what I'm going by. Have you got the bottom line figures where they know exactly how much difference?
And the recommendations have been good for Cliffs, yes.
I agree. Thank you.
So, and they're ready to start now.
All right, that's the breakdown for this. What does it cost of Gallagher and who was the other one? Centos? You got those numbers, the bottom line?
I can get, bottom line, I can get that. Let me see. And Centos was 12,000.
Cliffs is 8,256, so Centos was around 12?
Yes.
And you got any?
Monitoring for Gallagher was 1,400 a year. And for Cliffs is 960. So right there, you're, you know, saving.
Good work on that. I think if the school system's using them, that's a great endorsement for us to.
Yes, yes.
And, and they're lower, so it's sort of a win-win.
And like I said, several people have recommended them.
Got it.
And the commissioner wanting one person to call, and they guarantee that, you know, one person. So this is just to look annually at them and inspect them if anything has to be done and it's more, that's with everybody. I think all three of them.
Some of them do more than annual, as far as the. Only thing that has to go more than annual was the blowdown.
Is the hoods. Yeah, they had to be semi-annual, twice a year.
And the sheriff's department was the only one with that, right?
Yeah, they're the only ones that actually has a full blown hood, and the senior center has just an exhaust hood.
Yeah. That's good.
Good work.
Thanks, Connie. Any other questions for that? All right, that brings us down to the turnip seed engineering contract in regard to Grandview Mr. Landham, you got anything you want to?
Yeah, I think we need to have a talk with Chris about all of that. I'm, I'm not sure if he's, the, the way we have this set up, the county is not responsible for the repair of the dam, and, and we're not paying any of the engineering costs associated with that. And so we need to be clear with Chris that he doesn't get to charge us a percentage of the amount of the geophone that's being used for that. And it looks like he, it is, he probably doesn't mean it this way, but when you read that table, B1, B dash 1 or.
And back on, back on page nine, on the very back, second to the back.
Probably need to clarify that before we sign it and send it out there.
If you, if y'all remember, you've given me the authority to, at least to wait till January to go ahead and sign these contracts. We just want to, me and Mr. Landham has worked with, Chris Pogey is one of the individuals with turnip seed engineering, and they just gave us a blank number, what we wanted with the scope of work to go with it. So this is the scope of work to clarify, because we felt like that, we wanted to be sure that the dam repair and the geotechnical oversight was not in the dam repair coming out of turnip seed engineering. oversight was not in the dam repair coming out of, uh, turnip seed engineering, because they get a percentage, these engineering companies get a percentage of, of those, so if they don't have a dog in the fight, as Wel, Wel said, they, uh, then now the rest of it, they would have.
Yeah, that's the, that's the observation, and that's what we, that's what we work on.
Mm-hmm. So what, what they're gonna be, what we're wanting them to be responsible for is, is the pump station, the, uh, the pickup line coming out of the lake, as well as the distribution lines going, uh, to the Piggins County's, uh, system. And me and Mr. Landham will, will get with them and clarify that. On page nine, uh, that one million, four eighty-three, four hundred, um, that should not be part of their scope of work.
So you're saying that should not be part of the engineering turnips?
That's for turnips, that's correct.
Right, okay.
They should be responsible for everything else, but not, but not that. Because it's not mentioned, if you, when you read the contract, it's not mentioned in the contract, but all of a sudden it shows up on that, on that particular, it couldn't just be an oversight that that was, was put in our eyes, I don't know. Okay. I don't, uh, have y'all got any questions on the, on that? I don't have anything. Ms. Landham, you got anything?
I've got two things I'd like to ask y'all about for the, um, meeting. One is y'all, y'all instructed me to go forward with those two road closures, and a part of that is of, of holding a public meeting. And I was thinking that this, December might be kind of a hectic time for business and personal reasons, and I didn't know if, would it be, or would, would you want me just to go ahead and set up a, a called meeting for the purpose of the road closure, maybe after the January meeting? Would that be good, or would you rather do it? The work session might be too, too soon in January. I don't know, with the beginning of the first week and, and of the new year and all.
What we can do if, if, uh...
Or just tell me about it.
Yeah.
I, I was just thinking that after the call, after the road meeting, it wouldn't even be, you should have a new, another meeting.
Well, on, on these two road closures, what do we need to get ready for these two road closures? I mean, do we get to get survey work done?
I think Rodney's been a big help in this, and I think we've got all of our, what, what we need preliminarily, and, and I've got to run a legal app to, to, for the notice of the meeting. And then the purpose of your hearing is, is to see if there's any public benefit, um, if the public still uses these roads, if there's any public benefit drained by these roads being open. And, but one of them's been gated for seventeen years, so I don't anticipate much, but I don't see how, some like say they've been using because of this being gated for so long. And then the other one, we've got that water line in that, and I, we, I've got a way that we're sorry about water line, and we, if y'all choose to abandon that, it would just, it depend on the testimony that you get in those public meetings as to what decision you made, but I don't know that it'll be very, very controversial. I, again, I guess I'm, I don't wanna dink it, but hopefully it'll be a long...
Well, we've got, we've got another one that has, that has come up, another road that is...
A third one?
Yeah, that, that's a public road, but it's not county maintained. There's a difference between a, a county road that's, that's maintained by the county, but it's also different between a public road that's maintained by the county. This one here is a, an old, old, old county road that hadn't, it's been closed more than several, well, not closed is the wrong term, but it has not been used more than, I think, twenty-two years, and we were asked here last week if possibly we might wanna consider going officially closing it.
If we've not maintained it, if we've never maintained it, it's not a county road.
No, but it is a public road.
But we don't have the ability to stop the public from using it. They, the public may have acquired prescriptive rights to use those thoroughfares.
Mm-hmm.
And, and that's, that's not, we don't, uh, other than through condemnation, which isn't really appropriate in this country.
Right.
You, you really don't have the authority to, to shut it down. We cannot warrant to someone that, that third parties have not acquired prescriptive rights outside of, of your maintenance.
So if we got, say, for instance, we come across a, a, a road, the old dirt road that hasn't been maintained or even done, been traveled in twenty-two years, we don't have a, we don't have to...
If we don't maintain it, there's no action we can take.
Okay.
And, and let me, let me put it to you another way. If, if you decide to abandon these two roads that you have talked me about, that does not mean that third parties don't have the right to use those roads. You're just saying the county's not gonna maintain it anymore, you're not, you're assigned on the issue as to whether or not a third party has the, has the right to use it.
Okay.
Because we, we're not in the business of wanting time to load those. We can't do that. But it's a, it's a difference between a county maintained road and a covered road.
It's old, uh, mineral spring, part of Mineral Springs Road, goes way back in there, uh, to Millinow River. My, my, I guess, let, let me, let me do a, a scenario to the fact that somebody, somebody from, you know, from Florida or wherever comes up here and buys three acres of land on a little old dirt road that hasn't been opened in twenty-two years, and all of a sudden wants to come and call the county, wants to know when we're gonna upgrade the road, uh, what's...
If it's been maintained by the, if it is...
No, it's never been maintained by the county.
Then it's not a part of our road system, and we have no responsibility for, just like I have no responsibility to take my driveway.
Okay.
I mean, that's, that's the same example there. If we have ever maintained a road, we have a duty to keep it maintained...
Right.
Forever until we go through the process that we're part of of these two roads.
Okay, I understand. I just want to be sure...
For example, that Florida person, if they want to put a gate up on that property, that's between them and whoever else might object to that gate, and we're not a part of that, that company.
Okay.
And that's why, that's why even if, if we decide to abandon a road, two years later somebody says, "I've got the right to use that," we're not involved in that, because in that process, we are not warranting that no one else has the right to use it through prescriptive rights.
Okay.
Phil, I think having that called meeting is the way to go on that.
Right after your January board meeting, regularly.
That's what I was...
That's, that, to me, that'd be, I think it, I hope it would be convenient for you. I, I would, I mean, if it was, if we thought it was gonna take three hours here, and then we won't do that at six o'clock, not that good. But I'll, I'll set it up for that if that's true.
Is that gonna, is that, if we must have that meeting at that time, is that gonna rush, you gonna, is the school board have their meeting the same?
No, they have accepted first.
Okay, so it's not gonna interfere?
Unless they do a call. The other thing I need to, this good news, um, we, we, if y'all remember, we have an agreement with the other two counties regarding the juvenile court, public defense, and we, each county appoints one funds and appoints one full-time member, that, that, that attorney is recommended to you by committee, and then, and then unless you've got an issue with committee recommendation, you appoint them. And then all three of those attorneys together with complete attorneys that we have to find, will handle the public defender load in juvenile court for all three counties, the, the ones that Gilwin fan and also work in Piggins and vice versa. And we have, we had someone lined up to, to take this spot in January, and they had a change in plans, but I, I believe we have a new one that, that with Judge Wheeler's help and with Judge Wigginton's help, I believe we, we've identified and found a, a really good solution for that problem. And I hope to have that name on the resolution for you in the next board meeting after our court, too. So, but if you can see that on the agenda, that's what it's about. If you have questions about it, let me know, and I'll, I'll give you all the time to end it.
And, uh, Ms. Lisa, uh, you're getting us a list together, uh, for the, I can't remember if it's gotta be in the December, the last meeting in December or first meeting in January, where we have some individuals that might have to be reappointed on certain boards, so you're gonna have us that list together?
Yes.
Okay. All right, any, uh, you got any thing, y'all, any further questions or comments or... Ms. Fay?
Hello?
Ms. Connie?
I'm good.
Chief? Richard? Paper, how's that?
I'm good.
Huh?
I called and she wasn't calling.
Okay. All right. Mr. Phil, you got any other?
I don't have... Oh, and I would like to ask one other thing. As we go forward in the next year, uh, these, uh, the work session, the question I need to ask you, do we have to, it, it's just an open, open work session, do we have to formalize an agenda, or can we just put on there? I know you need an agenda, but can we just put on there, discussion of topics? I mean, what happens previous to, to like, to like, for instance, today, that some of this stuff didn't show up till yesterday? So how does Lisa do an agenda for a work session? Because that's the only time that we can talk to one another.
You just amend your agenda.
Well, I understand that, too.
But you, you just always need something for general discussion.
Yeah.
You gotta have that for general discussion, but you gotta publish an agenda.
Okay.
And you just can publish it as...